Okay, this is the City of Bonnie Lake's council workshop for the date of July 19th, 2022. Let's start with the slogan flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
All right, Madam Clerk, could you go and roll, please?
Mayor Kella.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter. Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLeinman.
Here.
Councilmember Swatton.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Sheriff, I was informed prior to the roll call that Deputy Mayor Carter is traveling back from Idaho, and even if he is in town, he's probably in no condition to meet with us tonight. So is there a motion for him to be excused?
Salute.
Seconded.
All righty. I believe Deputy Mayor Carter now has been excused. And we do, Mr. Johnstone and I have requested for to pull item G from the agenda today and forward it to the Finance Committee first. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, good. Item G has now been pulled off of our agenda tonight, and will go to the Finance Committee. All right, now we can have the council open discussion. Anybody wish to start? Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On the screen up here, we're going to...
Okay, just a minute.
It's all planned out.
Just a minute. Click anything.
Okay.
Don't, don't.
Well, in the meantime...
Well, anyway, I'll move on. Well, we're trying to show you, really proud to be a part of a volunteer group that took about 10 years in the making to live together, but you'll notice that on, you know what we call it, our art park on, that is, on Mall Drive and to the road next to Cross Street Two there, we have Fisherman's Son. There's been a black frame there that Deputy Mayor Evans, I mean, Justin Evans, councilperson Evans, and his company put together a black frame for us. And in that black frame are glasses from our old bus stops about 10 years ago, and the city saved those for us and resurrected them and put four of those into those black frames. And so we have some history there that we've had a number of volunteers on this pitch you like here that put this together and made it happen last night. So, yeah, I'm really proud of the volunteers and what people do for our city there to make things special.
Preston, can I press you?
Oh, yeah. Please.
That's amazing.
Yeah, it's really, a lot of people do so much. Shall we move on, Stacey?
Just a minute.
Where did that glass? Was that glass already etched or not?
It was already etched. And the etching, the design was made by Bonnie Lake high school students.
Oh, wow. It was, I believe, when downtown had the bus station, it was one of the bus stops there, and then when Pierce Transit.
Pierce Transit.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, Pierce. It's downtown, but now.
We have bus stops.
They were in the bus stop.
Yeah, it was over there, and then when there was a transition, that went away. We're able to say...
No, it was out here. It was like on the ones that were out on the highway.
Oh, it wasn't over there?
Well, they could have been over there, too. That piece of art mysteriously disappeared and never reappeared.
Oh, okay.
It's got to be restored.
Okay. Yeah, it was done by the high school. It was many, many years ago.
Yeah. It was great to preserve that and have volunteers do that for us and also make a change in our city that way.
Can you imagine some guy that made that or that made that 20 years ago, 15 years ago, driving by? Like, what?
The etching does look quite right. We are missing that vehicle. Well, thank you, Councilmember Watson. That's all I have. Thank you. And I think it's probably an appropriate time to recognize former councilmember Dole, his membership or his service to the city. I did get that email as well that he was leaving on Thursday and moved to Idaho.
That's correct.
Yeah, and the city will miss him. Okay, anybody else? All right, moving past open discussion.
We have no corrections for this, Mayor.
Oh, thank you. Yes, and for the record, that'd be of the council minutes. Thank you, Councilmember Watson. All right, and now we have the presentation from Deputy City Attorney and our prosecutor, Deana Burke, and I'll hand the floor over to her.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening. Hi, Don.
Yeah.
Thanks for having me. It's hard coming in here. Trying something. Do you really like it? I will, I have to wear a mask because I was supposed to coach a week ago, so I will use my really loud voice.
Annoying.
I'm gonna get my mouth shut.
All right, good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Deana Burke. I'm the Deputy City Attorney Prosecutor, and tonight I'm giving a presentation about the, I guess, question that is going to definitely go to you, which is, Ms. Kathleen Haggard has given her notice that she's residing. She's been the contract city attorney for, I think, at least probably over a decade at this point. And the big question is, what direction does the mayor and council want to go in terms of continuing to have an, what I would call an out-of-house contract attorney, or does the city want to have an in-house city attorney that are city employee who's full-time dedicated to provide legal advice to council and staff? So a little bit of background about the city attorney position. State law requires that the city manager or city administrator make a recommendation to council about having a city attorney. So state law requires that the city of Bonnie Lake have a city attorney, whether that's part-time, full-time, contract, or in-house city employee. That's going to vary based on, you know, different cities have different needs. And so one of your decisions ultimately has to be, what are the needs of Bonnie Lake? Additionally, Bonnie Lake Code also creates the office of the city attorney. It states that this person is the advisor to the mayor and council, as well as officers, commissions, and boards. So code also creates this position and sets out the duties of that position. Additionally, city code talks about more of the duties of the position, regularly attending council meetings, workshops, and special meetings. A council member may ask for an oral or written opinion from the city attorney, and additionally, the city attorney is to be present at council meetings, and if there's any points of order or questions about procedure or specific rule application, that city attorney is present in order to advise about how to go forward. So the current city attorney is Ms. Kathleen Haggard. She's an outside contract city attorney. She has a law firm that contracts with the city of Bonnie Lake, as well as other cities, to provide municipal legal services. In February of this year, she gave a six-month notice of resignation, giving six months to find a, to figure out what the city wants to do. My understanding is that she's agreed to stay on for the rest of the calendar year so that this can be a decision that's made as a part of the budget process. Ms. Haggard sent an email kind of outlining things that she's not currently doing, that if the city were to have an in-house city attorney, these are items that could be addressed by an in-house city attorney. She talked about reviewing bid packages and helping make decisions about bidder responsiveness and responsibility, helping to draft ordinances and development codes, working with risk management, reviewing ordinances, resolution, and agenda bill items, working with the various committees and commissions, attending department head meetings, providing legal presentations and training to council and staff, and also just general availability for, you know, 40-plus hours a week for staff regarding any city-related legal need. Upcoming legal issues that, however the city decides to go, would be something the city attorney would need to address. The police body or camera footage is going to have a lot of legal issues. This could be both prosecution and civil. You have the whole discovery process where the prosecutor's office has to provide it to defense attorneys. And then separate from that, there's also public records act requests. So members of the public have a right, under Public Records Act law, to request copies of that footage. There's going to be a whole bunch of questions about what should be redacted or what should be provided to those citizens. And those are all legal questions that the city attorney...
Before you go on, Ms. Burke, I did want to remind the council of the presentation that Ms. Burke put on about the Public Records Act and how the city could be personally liable without it going to our insurance if we do, if we are in violation of that act. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so is the, the police reports, Bonnie Lake doesn't manage the police reports, is that, that's done, so that's not... But the body cam footage is managed by the BD. Is that, is that the case? Do I understand that correctly?
Yes, we manage our own body camera. We manage our own body camera footage, and we can redact on our side to the one incident. Yeah, we do manage.
So the report you write will wind up going into the record that's managed by another organization, and then our body cam's going to go into our own. And so that'll be like two things that get managed separately for an incident? Is that, is that the way this is going to work going forward?
My understanding is that a person can file a public records act response, both for the police report and the body camera footage, and that's something that's worked through the P records clerks and the police departments.
All right. Well, that actually is, that's nice. That's kind of where I was at is, are we sending people, you know, or...
We're handling all that stuff in-house, as far as both those, the written paperwork and the body cameras on our side. We can handle both of those.
Well, and thank you, Assistant Chief Doyle, for attending our meeting. Please introduce yourself for the record so we can...
Again, Ryan Wild, Assistant Chief Doyle.
And I appreciate you being here instead of an in-v stead of Chief, Jeter. I didn't want that to be interpreted. All right, you ready to continue?
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you. Additionally, we now have a full-time code enforcement officer. There's a backlog of code enforcement cases that need to be worked through. These can have both criminal prosecution issues as well as civil issues. For example, if the city decides it has the funding to go and do a maintenance, in other words, the city goes in themselves and cleans up the property, there's a whole bunch of legal issues that can come up with that. Development agreements can be something that a city attorney would need to advise on. And additionally, as I already talked about, any sort of Public Records Act responses, even outside of the body board camera program and responses, would be something that a city attorney could work on. Looking at the city, you know, Bonnie Lake has grown a lot. My understanding is that from 2010 to 2021, the population increased by 35%, and business employment from 2010 to 2019 increased by 39%. It's anticipated that by 2035, the population could be up to 30,000 people. There's the East Town and Midtown developments, and there's also just developers looking to develop and add more housing, which means that the population will continue to grow. Looking at comparable cities by population, you know, a lot of cities have gone the route of having an in-house city attorney. There, for example, has an attorney, Covington, Battleground, Tumwater, Moses Lake, those are all somewhat similarly sized cities to Bonnie Lake. If you look at Pierce County population of cities that are under 10,000, pretty much the only city that has an in-house city attorney is Dupont. They also have the largest population of that grouping at 9,400. You know, they're, they're not a Roy or a Ruston, they're the largest of that grouping. Interestingly, once you get to over 10,000 in terms of population, it flips. The only other city outside of Bonnie Lake who does not currently have an in-house is Edgewood, and their population is about half that of Bonnie Lake. So five, Sumner, University Place, Hualap, Lakewood, Auburn, and Tacoma all have an in-house city attorney. In terms of, you know, the money issue and cost, you know, from discussions I've had with law firms that do this line of work and what they're charging, you know, the costs of everything are going up. Ms. Haggard was kind of giving the city a pretty good deal on her hourly rate. You know, other law firms aren't, that specialize in municipal work aren't charging what she was charging. You're probably looking at about $350 an hour. So, you know, if you hired a full-time contract attorney, you know, that's doing 40 hours a week, you're over $700,000 a year. A part-time contract attorney at 20 hours a week is $364,000. If it's a full-time in-house attorney at the grade 25 and with benefits and adding additionally benefits, conferences, supplies, memberships, it's about $250,000. I had some people ask, well, what about specialty attorney? That's a cost that's going to exist no matter whether the city goes in-house or contract. If you go in-house, absolutely, there can be special circumstances that come up where instead of having an attorney with a broad knowledge base, the city needs an attorney that specializes in it, in that specific area. Maybe they don't just specialize in environmental, but they specialize specifically in water and environmental. That need will always exist whether the city goes in-house or contract. If you, if a city goes contract, what will happen is that law firm will most likely already have on staff or have a relationship with an environmental or water franchise labor attorney, and they'll just pass through that higher billable hour rate to the city. So the city's paying for it either way as those needs arise. Sometimes the cost of specialty attorneys can be recouped, such as franchise agreements, but that need is always going to be there, and it's just something that the city needs the budget for either way. One of the questions I would ask was, what about capping a contract attorney's annual rate? In other words, say, we're going to hire a contract attorney, but we're going to cap, you know, we're only going to pay $50,000 a year. Well, I did some digging, and City of Smithland has tried to do that. They entered a contract with Ogden Murphy Wallace, who does a ton of municipal law, and it was for a one-year interim city attorney contract. And the contract says that the total services is $50,000 per year, was what the city was going to spend. Well, I got copies of their invoices, and their invoices, they were charged about $5,500 for December, but then once January, February, March, and April, they're getting charged $24,000, $25,000, $28,000 a month. And I have the invoices, and these were just standard, you know, city attorney tasks of working with staff and answering questions. So assuming that they get billed at their current rate that law firm's billing them at, they will probably end up paying about $300,000 for that whole year. One of the questions I've been asked is, what about using MRSC as a stopgap? In other words, paying less for a contract city attorney and instead let's use MRSC? Well, MRSC very clearly on their website says that they don't provide legal advice. They're just a general consultant service. They provide resources and responses to inquiries, but they do not form an attorney-client relationship. And that means that if a city staff member sends an email maybe about litigation, there is no attorney-client relationship. So that's not a privileged email, which means it could be subject to a Public Records Act disclosure. So that protection is not going to be there. Another question I've been asked is, what about using WCIA pre-defense program as a stopgap? Well, I exchanged emails with WCIA about this, and the city attorney is specifically identified as a part of the pre-defense team. So it's not a program that's set up to be used in lieu of having a city attorney. It's a program where the city attorney is actually supposed to be a part of the team and be a part of the team. And program availability is not guaranteed. And they specifically said it's not established to be an alternative. WCIA insurance, as already mentioned, has exclusions from their policies, such as Public Records Act, Open Public Meetings Act, violations, even communicable disease, cyberliability, environmental contamination by students, and more. I have a whole copy of, like, pages of their exclusions. So just the additional benefits that people have mentioned to me that would come with, if councilors decide to go in-house, would be, you know, one of the concern that some people may have when they, the city contracts with the city attorney, is that they bill hourly. And so it's kind of like you're getting in a taxi cab when you email or call that attorney with a question. You know, the flag goes down, and all of a sudden you're getting charged in six-minute increments. If you have an on-staff city attorney, if a member of staff has whatever random question, they can go ask that person, and they don't have to worry about running up a bill or financial impacts to the city.
And I'm sorry, Ms. Burke, I do want to emphasize a point that Councilmember McLeinman's made at our retreat that has been bothering me since, because I don't believe I supplied an adequate answer there. In fact, I believe, and you can correct me, Councilmember McLeinman's, but I believe your concern was the fact of going to an attorney and because that attorney may be busy with other clients, or if that might be an assumption, but the delay that that attorney would have in getting an answer back to you. One of the things I did not address at that meeting was the fact that if we were to get an in-house city attorney, the city would be their own client. And therefore, I believe your concern would be mitigated by the fact that it is a, it would be Bonnie Lake's city attorney, therefore, any delay in any sort of, any sort of answer can be immediately addressed and rectified at that point rather than us having a contract attorney who has many clients. Anyway, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Additional benefits would be availability for city council meetings, committee meetings, department head meetings, working on budget issues. As Mr. Mayor, as you already said, as a person completely dedicated to the city, they don't have other clients who are competing for attention. It would mean that the city could have a true legal department. It would also mean that there's an additional attorney available for just criminal court backup. Right now, we've gone to having criminal court three days a week instead of two days a week. So if there's a hearing also scheduled in Pierce County, or if there's a thicker vacation outage, it's another person that's available to come and fill in court. Additional assistance for Public Records Act responses, and also just quicker responses to your staff and public. And thank you. Are there any questions?
Yes, I do have a question, and I have a statement, and then we'll open it up to the floor. Ms. Burke, I've noticed that we do not have our contracted city attorney at this meeting right now, but as a parliamentarian. So there've been a few times we've had to rely on you to answer some kind of question with that. Did you discuss the, when you made this presentation, did you discuss it with our, Ms. Haggard?
I believe I emailed her about it, and I emailed her the date of it.
And did you, did you ever discuss this with her as far as if she approves it, or what is her opinion or advice on Bonnie Lake getting in-house?
Yeah, so she sent an email to both me and the city administrator stating that, stating that she believes Bonnie Lake is ready to have an in-house city attorney. And it had that list of things that are not currently being accomplished, that an in-house city attorney would accomplish. Those are directly from her.
Okay. And is that because Bonnie Lake is currently roughly about 23,000 in the population, or there are other factors that put into that in making that recommendation?
I think it's the size of the city, population-wise, and just the growth of potential legal issues. You know, Bonnie Lake's been fortunate in that we haven't had a lot of lawsuits for Public Records Act issues, but, you know, there are people that make a living doing that. And one of the things she mentioned was that we've been fortunate to be off the radar, but as we've grown, we're more likely to be on the radar now for more sophisticated Public Record Act requests, plus the various, the developments that are looking to be happening. Thank you.
Exactly. And with that, my statement really involves the fact that Ms. Burke used the word fortunate twice in her response to me. I would actually go a step further and say we've been lucky that we haven't been, that we haven't been subject to liability in the past with the way that we have been operating with us not even having a formal legal department. It is something that I believe that since I've been in office for the last seven months, that Bonnie Lake's taken a reactive position to, meaning that we have a legal issue come up, and then we ask, we refer it over to Ms. Haggard to answer. And another step with us having a full-time city attorney would be the fact that we can be proactive on a lot of issues that have been stalled lately. And if we have what we should have, given Bonnie Lake's size and involvement, that at this point, the cost-benefit analysis, I believe, is, would be rather irrelevant when it comes to this discussion, because we're talking about a new dynamic in how the city attorney would be handling the legal department and how our potential legal problems would be handled right from the very beginning. So it's not blatantly obvious at this point. I think the mayor am in favor of adding a full-time city attorney at this point, but of course, it is up to the council. Now, let's open it up to...
Mr. Mayor.
Right, would you start? Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Ms. Ryerson.
Thank you. Before you open up to the council, I kind of wanted to talk about the budget process. This process needs to be completed before we would get there in the budget, and so that's partly why you're going to be discussing this tonight. I do need direction on what the council's going to want to do, either at this meeting or the next meeting, so that we can start the process of either recruiting for a city attorney for our code or recruiting for a contract attorney. Either way, I need a decision to include in my budget process. There isn't enough time for me to present this to you in October, November, and have that process completed by the end of the year. that process completed by the end of the year.
Thank you, Ms. Ryerson, and I can add to Ms. Ryerson's comment in the fact that I believe it's been for a few months, three months, that we have haphazardly had our parliamentarian present for our council. So it, we've even gone with council meetings and workshops without even having the benefit of having Ms. Burke at the meeting. And again, our council cannot be running that way. If we, if we do have a parliamentarian, we need a full-time city attorney. Okay, any further questions before we open up the floor? All right. Who wants to start? Councilmember Evans.
Yeah. Okay. Do you know the name of the Edgewood attorney? I'm looking to see their in-house. All I'm seeing is a contract two years ago with a third-party external one. But what?
I can look that up. I'd have to get that.
And just going over your numbers, I sent out to the council, I thought Jerry may have done that, but I think it was a goof on my part. I missed forwarding that earlier on. She provided the last six years, 2017 through 2021, and then John provided current, January 1st through June 30th of 2022, expenses that we've been paying. And in 2022, so the first half of the year, we paid $35,000 in attorney fees, 143 and a half billable hours. That's five and a half hours per week, double that since it was the first half of the year. That's roughly $72,000 to $75,000 for one year for contract attorney. And that is at Kathleen's $250 rate. In 2021, we spent just under $82,000 for 327 hours. That averaged out to 6.2 hours per week. In 2020, we spent a little more, 123,684,50 hours of work, 8.63 hours per week. 2019, 139,262,506 billable hours for 9.73. And in '18, 136,494 hours, 9.5 hours per week. Going back to the year where we spent the most, which was 2017, 147,000 for 534 billable hours. Now, that was still Kathleen, that was a different group at the time. That averaged out to 10.2 hours per week. So if we look at just 2020, 2021, the known 2022 and doubling that for the second half, that's $280,000 of contract attorney fees for three years' worth of work, when that's roughly what is being proposed for one year's worth of work. That's $250,000.
Yes, and I certainly don't disagree with your numbers, Councilmember Evans, but again, we're talking about analysis that is done on a, as I stated, a reactive way of having our city attorney, our contracted city attorney run the business, which is we, as a city, detect some sort of legal issue on our own and then refer it over to the city attorney who will, who would do the work. And in our history, I believe it was $275 that Ms. Haggard did charge when she did regulate from her firm. And, and she was looking to pour business at the time because it was a new firm and she had already contracted with us through her firm. So they made an independent deal, which, as Ms. Burke did point out, is, was quite the discount. That does not exist in this world today. We would never find a, a contract attorney who's going to charge $275 an hour. And again, with that, the model that needs to be looked at is the fact that we have a city attorney who would be on top and be predicting our future legal issues. The one that comes up the most is the PDA violations that, that we're hanging on by thread and prayer right now that nobody has sued us for that. And that's something that the city would be personally responsible for. We could not put it over to the WIC. So it's, it's matters such as that, in addition to, to the things that we, as a city, just cannot prognosticate or predict, that would be, that would be the city attorney's job to be able to have some sort of assurance in place that we're looking forward into our legal issues rather than just reacting to the potential legal issues, or not even the potential ones, the legal issues that actually come in. All right. Councilmember Baldwin, oh, yes, listening. Is it okay to have Councilmember Evans?
Actually, I would like to.
Okay, sure, Councilmember Baldwin.
Mayor, first of all, thank you so much for your feedback. Obviously, your job is an attorney, and so I'm sure you have lots of excellent feedback and things like that. But I do know that you are a man that highly respects parliamentary. And so I have been attempting to have meetings with you to talk to you about some of the things that are related to those procedures, one of them being that during these kinds of discussions, as our parliamentarian, it is your responsibility to make sure that the council is. And so I, I'm just, I'm pointing to that not to, you know, make light of anything, but it is important that council members, as our parliamentarian, that you are able to make sure that we are able to be heard.
Okay.
Instead of the parliamentarian speaking first on matters.
Well, actually, it's our city attorney that's parliamentarian, not the chair.
Right.
And according to, and according to Robert's rules, at least the Robert's rules that I've read.
Yeah.
The, the chair can actually speak without having to be recognized. And being the chair, maybe I can actually make statements and comments first.
Yes, I understand that, but we were definitely told as our mayor, as our mayor, chairing these meetings, that you are to try to speak last.
Oh, okay, well, I can certainly reverse the order.
Yes.
Our deputy mayor is actually the chair of these meetings, not you. So someone should be appointed who in council take his place.
Councilmember, I hate to disagree with you, Councilmember Watson, but it is abundantly clear that the mayor is the chair of both the workshops and the city council meetings.
And you should really change changes you want to make to the council.
It's not a change.
We've done it for 10 years.
Well, I don't know where that came from, but it is in violation of, adopted in our code.
Counsel.
Yeah, that, that you think, that the council has, but I can assure you that the mayor is the chair of these meetings.
I agree with Councilperson Baldwin that we should be heard first, and you can follow up to our questions.
No, and I, and I agree with that, too. My apologies for putting myself into order. I believe this is probably the first time I've done this, but I think you know how I feel on this, on this issue.
I do, yes.
So, yes, I agree with you, Councilmember Baldwin. I will comment last if I have any proof.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. And Councilmember Evans.
Thank you, I appreciate that. For Edgewood, I was just giving the note, Anne Marie Soto, but she is a contract lawyer with Madrona.
Yeah, and, yeah, I believe my intention was to represent there, they have a contract city attorney, Edgewood.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, oh, my, yeah, my bad.
Okay.
Yeah, you're right. So, so over the last six years, I know we're talking about a structural change, but over the last six years through our contract attorney, they've averaged 8.29 hours per week. So that's Monday. What are we doing the remainder of the week that we're filling that? Now, I know there's more stuff, but is there 80% more stuff?
May I respond?
Yeah.
So one of the things I think you noticed in your numbers was that, I think it was around 2020-ish that the numbers went down.
Yeah.
I think one of the main reasons for that is Ms. Barber, my predecessor, started taking on a lot of civil-related projects and that resulted in Ms. Haggard having less work. And so that was absorbed by, by Ms. Barber, and if you're welcome to reach out to her to discuss that more.
It was roughly one hour per week. It went from 9.73 in 2019 to 8.63 in 2020. So it wouldn't, I wouldn't say it was drastically different. I mean, the biggest swing overall was from 2017 at 10.2 hours per week to where we sit right now at 5.5. And I'm guessing the 5.5 this year is due to the resignation and just the pullback from that. But going back off of last year, which was our second shortest year, or our second least amount of work years, was 6.2. And I would say in 2021, we had quite a bit going on here as a council with some resolutions and, and elections and all sorts of different things that, that were thrown at our city attorney at that time, still only averaging, you know, leaving, leaving early at 6.2 hours on Monday. So I'm, I'm just asking, I know there's additional stuff. Is there enough work to fill for more days' worth of work that we're not doing right now?
Absolutely. I would say that the fact that the city downhill from us, that's half our size, has two in-house attorneys plus a bevy of contract attorneys, shows that there's enough for one in-house civil attorney.
And have we had any issues not getting answers from Kathleen's group in a timely manner?
I'm sorry, what was the question?
Have we had any issues not getting information in a timely manner? Everyone's talking about that as a potential risk that if we go to a contract attorney, we may not be their top priority. We may not get answers. For the last ever, forever, have we had an issue with that?
I'm not aware of an issue, but I primarily do prosecutions, so, you know, I haven't had anybody come to me saying they have had an issue.
Okay.
But, I mean, not here tonight.
No, I just want to make sure we're not trying to solve problems that don't exist, like changing out keys for key cards when we don't. Just, all right, that's it. I render my time, sir.
Anybody else? Okay, Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate your passion on the issue myself. It's great to have people that are in the discussion that actually, you know, have life experience with the issue, so I always appreciate your input. I would agree with counsel though, that this is a council workshop, so deference to the council discussion and kind of an open discussion. I really appreciate being an open discussion on that so that we can, you know, all the issues out on the table. I would say that, you know, for me to come at this particular issue, of course, I'm probably, you know, almost always against hiring people type of a thing because it's more of a resource thing. So, you know, the former government, as the way I understand it, that we have is we have a strong mayor and we have a council. So the people elected the strong mayor to do the strong mayor things. And the strong mayor things include running the city. And how this strong mayor wants to run the city and all the details and all the millions of things that you guys do in the, in the background, you know, have at it, right? So as long as the problem becomes when you come to us, or me as a city council member and say, hey, I want to hire somebody, or hey, I need some more money, then I'm like, you know, perch, because me, myself, I believe that I was elected to try to, try to bring value to the citizens as much as possible and not to overburden them, you know? It specifically says in my campaign literature that I believe that the citizens should benefit from and not be burdened by the city of Bonnie Lake, because the city is an optional entity and it should provide value to the citizens. And men and women that we have working and folks do an outstanding job. That is what the previous mayor said is the core of the city, is your people, you know? They're not, they're not my people. I'm council member, I don't direct anybody. They're the people that you choose to run the city. And if you choose to hire 12 attorneys, you know, and you can do it within the budget, I'm probably like, okay, yeah, you know, that's the way you want to run the department. I think we have an issue as the way I understand it, I haven't seen the budget and how it's going to turn out, right? So I don't know if it's going to turn out where it's like, well, you guess what? We, you know, did some jiggering around here, we found out how all this works, we're not going to have to increase our taxes, we're not going to have to increase fees, we're not going to have to do this, you know, increase our water rates or whatever, right? To make all this work. So, and that's the magic that the administration gets to do. So at that point, you know, I would have to make a decision on that. I can't make a decision tonight where I'm going to say, yeah, you know, that's great. Obviously, kind of to me, a presentation that was very much, you know, pro, of course. I would comment to the city council members, it's my experience that if you have to go to an internal executive source and ask a question, that you're going to get and you should get very well an executive type, you know, issue that's going to come at you. You're, you're trying to get some background, but you're, if you want a decent opinion on something, you're going to have to go to an expert source from a council member's perspective, you know? You can go to both, but you know, you need to get that, both sides of the issue. You know, you're not going to get that. And I worry a little bit about if we think that, you know, if the council has to ask for a parliamentary decision, you've already lost the battle. Because at that point in time, you know what the answer's going to be, so, you know, figure out your issues before, because if you ask a parliamentarian, they're going to say, oh, yeah, you know, the mayor's right. But, what else did I have on my screen?
Oh.
Yeah. Oh, okay, so good example, right? And I watched it play out, right? So we got a state law that comes up and says, you know, the state does these wacky things, they want to take away their gun rights for people, so they make all these, there. And it's a state law, city has to follow it, very straightforward. So all of a sudden, we get, you know, this elaborate discussion that comes up where, oh my gosh, you know, we have to change all this stuff, and we got to do this, we got to put these signs up, we got to do this, you know? And to me, as a council member of the city, I'm thinking, well, that's the state law, follow the state law, but just, you don't need any of that down here. And I called some outside resources and they're like, yeah, you can do it, you know, however you want to do it, as the council settled upon. But again, you know, in, in part of that scenario, we didn't get an issue where the administration identified a risk and said, hey, new state law, ours are in conflict, what do you think we should do, council? You know, it was more like, hey, we got an issue, ours are in conflict, now let's go do a bunch of stuff and present it to the council. Do whatever, we got a bunch of hours. When I didn't see a bunch of council members that were like, yeah, we need to be making sure, you know, that we protect the gun, gun rights as much as possible. I didn't get that out of the council. I think it would have been a much shorter amount of work that would have been done for that particular task if it would have been like, hey, what do we do? Well, we could just drop it out of our code and call it good. Okay, check. Instead, we spent, you know, umpteen council meetings and lots of legal hours, come to the same conclusion. That was just, you know, my weird example of, yeah, if you hire lawyers, you can hire, you can get businesses. And I'm sure we could, again, you know, they do great work. Undoubtedly, our people that I've seen that are on staff, they do fantastic work. It's the, whatever, the, if you're a hammer, everything's a nail. Well, if you're a lawyer, I would assume, you know, you need more of them or something. How does that work out, right? You know, you can never have too many, you know, it's a risk adverse because ours are risk adverse. Again, if it fits within the budget and you can make it all jiggered out, I'm interested in how you want to run your city because you were elected to do it, so.
Well, thank you, Councilmember Swatman, uh, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I'm struggling with this. I'm going back and forth with it. I did read through everything. Thank you, Gina, for preparing everything and, you know, it definitely answered a lot of my questions. And I think it would be a benefit to the city to just have somebody that was maybe more invested, like, you know, you were explaining and that. I think where, I did talk to MRSC about this at the AWC conference in regards to a city attorney. And, you know, I think one of the areas, and maybe this is just the way the governmental structure is, but I feel that there is a conflict because when an attorney is hired, they're, they can also be, and please correct me if I'm wrong, they can also be fired, hired or fired by the mayor, correct? Yeah, right? Is that correct?
Oh, yes, just like.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Just like any, why?
Absolutely, yes.
Right, yeah, there's no distinction.
And so that does, that does raise some red flags. And this is nothing against, see, this probably feels like I'm just attacking issue, I really am not. Also, I'm sorry, I just, I apologize. But, you know, I, I feel that regardless of what's, contrary to the belief, especially from our highest office, that the branches are equal, they're not. And the legislative branch is intended to be higher than the executive branch. That's why there's one of you and there's more of us, there's more representation from the people in the legislative body. And so I think, I echo the sentiment that Councilmember Swatman was talking about earlier and in all of our discussions about this, that we don't want to necessarily give the executive branch more power. And I know the service of the attorney is for the council, the city, and the mayor, but you are, and you are essentially able to hire and fire the attorney, which I think causes some conflict there. And so that's, that's where my reservation is personally, but I do think that a city attorney, well, and it's the same with Councilmember Evans and what he said about the costs. And I, I am aware of future possible litigation that could happen as well. And so that's, that's kind of where, where I'm at.
Permission, may, may I ask Councilmember Baldwin a question in response to those latest discussions? Okay.
Councilmember Paul Gwynn, that's a hypothetical, right now, I still have that same power to fire a contract attorney. In fact, it's more likely that I would be firing a contract attorney who is not as invested in the system. What would be the difference between that and an in-house council whose client is the city of Bonnley, not mine? And we get, not mine personally, it would be that we can get advice, you know, the mayor, the council can get advice from our in-house attorney. It's not a matter of that sort of structure, it's the matter of budget when it comes to that. In other words, you know, I could, I could, you know, say Kathleen was still on air, I could just say, I'm sorry, but, you know, we're terminating our contract and put something out there like that. I'm not understanding the distinction you're trying to make.
Yeah, that's a good point. I didn't think of it in that way. So I think, though, when someone is, they're just, they're more invested. And so I think with a contracted attorney, you know, they're not here all the time, they're not talking to you constantly. I think that's a bit of a different relationship.
I see.
Yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay. Oh, no, Councilmember Gwynn spoke yet.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just wondering, where are we going to get the money? Because obviously, this is going to be a bigger budget item than a contracted attorney. So with all of the budget issues, how are we supposed to, because this is a great presentation, but there's no real budget item on here. So, you know, it would have been nice if we could have seen the budget, possibly how it could work into the future budget, if, you know, if we're to put that out there and agree to having an in-house attorney. I'm just kind of wondering, you know, who gets short, the short end of the stick?
If I could, the reason I believe for this discussion is to give direction to the administration, whether they put forth a decision card for that budget item to us versus just going out here and find another contract attorney. So before, you know, I mean, she laid out the rough numbers there on that. So I think this is more, we're not taking a vote or making a decision on this, we're trying to give direction on if it's worth their investment of time to go down that road to put together that budget item in the first place.
Thank you for the clarification, Councilmember Evans.
And then Ms. Ryerson has her hand up.
I didn't mean to, yep, I didn't mean to step over your words, Councilmember Evans. Actually, I do need more than just a direction, I need to know what the council wants, because we are not authorized to hire an in-house city attorney without the FTE and a budget process. However, if we wait for the budget process, this won't get approved in time for us to do advertising for either requests for proposals for a contract attorney or for recruitment for an in-house attorney. The code, I believe, Councilmember Swatman probably knows this best, requires that any director level position, which this would be, goes out to an external hire unless the council authorizes it to waive that process. They've done it both ways in the past, and I just need to make sure that we have enough time to get somebody hired, whether it be contract or in-house, before January. So this process is actually happening outside of the budget, as Kathleen has expressed her desire to leave. So I do need a decision either way, outside of the budget process.
All right, thank you, Ms. Ryerson. And by the way, you make a wonderful ventriloquist. We heard words and the council wasn't moving at all.
My next career.
Councilmember Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about, you mentioned about public disclosure requests, how they're just going to be. You and I discussed hiring possibly someone else's staff there.
Oh, that's great.
Why would an attorney be helping them? Because currently Kathleen goes through those. Once they've completed them, why would you need to have the extra help of another attorney than just having them compile them? That can be used in the sense of, I can't.
Well, what I was, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, yeah.
One of the questions that would be my concern with that, and tell me if this does answer your question. If we did have an in-house council that would be able to assist with any sort of public records requests, but what I'm referring to is, basically, it would be more in-depth and better representation if we were sued for a public record violation. And we would have, and we'd be able to put forward a better defense, because that would be one of the things to where we'd have to hire out. And we can't throw that to our insurance. You know, we'd have to hire a council that way anyway. So the hypothetical there would be that, you know, we haven't been sued thus far. Hopefully, that if we bring in our in-house council, we can get to a point to where our risk of being sued is lower.
Another comment I could just make, you and I have talked about this numerous times in the past. I understand your point, you should do a great job here, and I see why she feels we should have one. But the amount of costs that Evans has brought forward to us, I would like to see us go to a contract next year, see how it goes, and then change it. There's a lot of sources in this building that didn't get raises a few months ago, and those dollars were to give to an attorney outside, on the mission, we could possibly, other people would be ignored from what may be a raise later on. And so I think you should take care of the existing staff and see how it goes in the future. And then if that doesn't work out with the contract giving the things that need in the city of disclosure, then let's get that changed next year. We don't have to do that right now, because then once you go and hire a full-time attorney, you have a problem to deal with how, why you don't want them to fire them or something. I saw, I don't want to do this, I'm probably go to contract.
Well, that's a very contentious point, Councilmember Watson, I do appreciate it. Anybody else? Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So kind of a technical note, maybe, possibly, I'm wondering, because you mentioned the hire-fire very accurately, of course, and I was trying to recall whether the council could terminate a contract or not. I don't know if the council has the power to terminate contracts.
Well, let's turn to our parliamentarian.
So, Mr. Mayor, the, in the code, the office of city attorney is an appointed position. So the mayor is able to appoint or fire based on them.
Right, indeed. But so my question is, whether the, you know, a contract with whatever, I got a contract with XYZ Cleaning Corporation. The council's not satisfied that the cleaning is happening from XYZ Corporation. The mayor's happy with it, but the council is not happy with it. Does the council have the ability to cancel the contract with XYZ Corporation?
If we approve it, I would think. I think as a regard, yes, you have power to be able to terminate contracts.
No, no, I'm talking about XYZ Cleaning Corporation.
The XYZ Corporation.
Yeah, so then, I mean, I guess in theory, the council could vote by majority.
And that's always a question to me, because I always have that, like, how does, I don't believe, council saying direction to the mayor is a problem for me, because I don't believe that that actually exists. You know, sort of like a mendamis order or some, or anything like that.
The only other thing to consider would be, a lot of times, there's contract language with the contractor, that they have to get 60 days notice or a.
All that kind of stuff. And that was, and that's kind of a ephemeral point out there, because if you have a hire, if you have an employee, council's going to have an extraordinarily hard time removing an employee, right? So, shouldn't be a council thing, that's extraordinary. I don't recall whether that would be, city attorney must be a non-union position.
Yes, it's not.
Okay. Yep. So that was, you know, a little nuance there with that, that kind of thing, I would imagine. And also, you know, there may be some homework to do, because I think, you know, again, if you can make it work in the budget, I might kind of interested, but I'm very interested, you know, what Councilmember Watson said, it's kind of like, because recalling that if this is a director level position, I believe that the council's going to have to also decide whether they want to establish the qualifications, or they're going to have to decide whether they want confirmation ability or wants the language, right? So, and, you know, the qualifications can, it's a lot of times where the council will pick, maybe not, because there's the issue with, yeah, I think the qualification, the council could say, you know what, we want a legal person that has these kinds of qualifications and lives inside the corporate limits of city Bonnley.
Right.
I think they could actually do that.
I don't know right off the top of my head. I assume you could be correct on.
Those types of things. So I think that that, you know, if the council chose to go the hired direction, that they really need to, so it's not like, you know, make a decision tonight, oh, yeah, let's go do that. Because I think, I'm very interested from the mayor's proposal on whether, you know, the mayor administration can come up with a way to make it work.
Oh, absolutely.
Without extra fees kind of thing, right?
Well, and I, again, I can go one step further with that. If the council gives direction for us to work for a full-time in-house council, I would definitely demur to council's direction in a lot of that. It wouldn't, I just personally believe in that as far as, you know, it wouldn't be my unilateral decision at all as far as doing it. I just, at this point, and as Ms. Ryerson has pointed out, we're at a point to where we need to decide if we're going in a contract attorney's direction for the next budget cycle or a full-time in-house council.
Sounds like there's a lot of details we got to iron out, in my opinion.
Yeah.
Yeah, I haven't heard from Mr. Clemens, of course, he's been sitting over there at the.
Yeah.
He did raise his.
Did he get him in there?
A rare opportunity.
Thanks. It's a work. I, I'm not a fan of a full-time attorney, I think I've made that known before, primarily right now. That could change in a year. Right now, there's a lot of things that have changed, right? We have a new administration, we have the changes within the administration. And just to be clear, I think the council has really tried to support staff this year. We tried to look at staffing and things like that. So it's not a, don't like the staff thing, it's really, one, right now, there's a lot of moving parts. So adding one more new thing to me is suspect. Two, a full-time employee is an obligation, right? I mean, an employee comes to city, you expect that the job's going to be there less than you wanted to have the job. The other thing is that I've had multiple opportunities in my career to dismiss attorneys. And Richard Drapiss from Jaws always comes to my mind. We need a bigger boat. When you walk out of a hearing or an appointment and you hear, all of a sudden, you realize, I need a bigger boat. And when you've got a contracted boat, you go back to the, go back to the dock, and you get a bigger boat, and you go back out and it's somebody else's boat, right? When they're a full-time employee, it's hard to get a bigger boat. You're stuck, right? And unfortunately, we don't have a justice system, we have a legal system. And in the legal system, sometimes you need to look at professionals and say, I need a bigger boat. So that, those are the three reasons why I'm just, like, nervous about this. That can change in a year, when things kind of like settle out a little bit in a lot of places, economy, budgets, administration, you know? So it's like, is this important? Yes. Is it urgent? No. So that's what's my.
Yeah, and the only commentary after that is, I believe we are a bigger boat. Used to be. Well, yes, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, thank you for a little kind of person there. Because I would point out, too, that for information for the council's purpose, that, you know, and attorney pointed out, too, that there's always going to be a need for specialty attorneys, you're always going to have that, so let's keep that, because, you know, different attorneys have different specialties. And to that extent, you know, there literally is issues that I was involved in that would have radically changed the focus of the city, because we had an A attorney's opinion that was like solid, 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 and it is not the direction that the city council wanted to go at the point in time. And I, as a deputy mayor, cornered some people at that point in time and said, hey, you know, this employee, this city attorney has given us the information that is not aligned with the city council. And basically, we were able to get another opinion, because we were not going to be able to go forward, because there's, that's what it is, when you get to a legal matter, opinion needed. If you're in court, you're asking a lawyer, it's generally, there's a gray area, you're there because there's a gray area. So we were able to get a different opinion, bigger boat, and get the job done. So there'll always be that, you know, regardless of what happens.
Well, and I think that's a very important point, Councilmember Swatman, is that the power of any sort of city attorney is, would only be to give an opinion. It is still up to the council to be the ultimate arbiter. Anyway, do we have any further comment? Because we need to move on to our B and O Act. I guess the one, the one last thing that we need is, we have to have a deadline of when we can put this to Ms. Ryerson so that we can give her direction. So what does council want to do with that? Do you want to put it on for an agenda item on a city council meeting? Do you want it to go to the committee? Or where are we with that? Because I believe that is.
Well, does it need to leave here? We could take just a straw vote here, and the majority of us say no, which, I'm kind of counting heads here, you might get that anyways, but why even have to pay more work on this stuff? Do we have to come forward? John?
No, I mean, you could certainly take a straw vote tonight.
And, well, the question would be a straw vote, would, you know, if it's a straw vote, but if we are, or if y'all as a council are going to make the decision, that does not make a straw vote, that makes it a binding vote. And this being our workshop, and we didn't clear it as a workshop with action plan, we would actually have to vote to see whether you want to take the straw vote.
I take straw votes in my shop, sir.
Oh.
My world is.
What's the question?
The question would be to the council, and we have to put it to a vote, is, does the council want to take a vote on this issue?
No, well, but I don't.
Yeah, we have to take a vote on taking a vote, unfortunately, that is part of the vote.
So if I'm understanding it correctly, I mean, the question we're trying to get answered is, you want us to prepare a budget with monies in it or a contract attorney, as it has been? Or you want to include a prepared budget with an in-house city attorney?
Contract. Okay, we vote on that? Yeah, well, that would depend on your vote, if you want to do it. I know that this council is not, is not used to that, but it is part of the formal procedure that if you're going to change the nature of our meeting to where we have an action plan, the council does need to have a formal vote on. So as Councilmember Evans said, it's a motion for a motion. Okay? And Councilmember.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
So basically, and maybe I can clarify my want and need, a straw vote kind of is where we're headed tonight, so that we could either come back with going out for an attorney or bringing back a contract, going out for an RFP, because that in itself has to be a council-proofed process, right? So that's where the council would vote on the RFP process, all of that jazz that would be John's involvement.
The vote tonight, actually, want us to prepare an AB contract, or do you want us to prepare an AB for a new house? And bring it towards council, because the AB will come to you guys, but you need to know which one to do.
Okay, so let's, let's do it that way then. And Councilmember.
Thank you, Senator.
Yeah, so I think, I'm nervous about taking a vote, taking action at a workshop, because we've done that a couple times in the past and hadn't been on the agenda, and I don't, I don't think, I really feel that's inappropriate for the public. I think if you want to risk, if the administration wants to take a risk and seek a full-time, start working on a full-time attorney, I think you can, you could probably do that as, but you understand there's a risk. I would propose that we just vote on Tuesday at the council meeting, whether or not we think that we should pursue a full-time attorney, and we can do it at a council meeting, if it's imperative and if it's important and urgent today. I think you're going to have to see a risk, because I certainly don't want to vote on it, but I think, I, on the other hand, I don't think you need too many more hints.
The added benefit to what, to what Councilmember. The added benefit to what, to what council member, I'm, that gives.
That's the important, right? It's a public.
Okay, council member Bullock.
Yeah, I'm also not. I, especially without Deputy Mayor Carter.
Oh, yeah.
We need to have as many votes as possible, and I would like to give the public time to speak on Tuesday next week at the, at the council meeting, and then, because I like to hear what the citizens have to say, and.
Now, the irony to that is that the, the person who actually makes or requests the agenda is council, is Deputy Mayor Carter, who is not here.
I was told there was going to be no vote tonight, so we need to take a vote.
Okay, well, all right, so how about we do that, then? We punt the matter over to Deputy Mayor Carter to put, to ask to put this on.
Perfect.
Okay. Oh, right.
Thank you, Tina.
No, no, thank you very much for the robust conversation, this is great.
Can I just clarify something?
Yeah.
Are you guys wanting us to prepare an AB vote, and then bring it to council next week, so that you can decide on which AB for us to actually call?
We're just doing it for a full-time attorney amendment, I'll be immediate follow-up.
Yeah, the full-time?
I'm just asking.
I think it'd be, I.
Because how do you do that without the context of the budget and all the rest of the details?
I believe, I believe that what I was asking is that we wait until Tuesday, when we have all council members here, before we even decide if it's going to be an AB for a contract or a, um, full-time.
In-house.
In-house.
Council member Bullock.
I, I would hate to ask the staff to do a bunch of work that it's, I mean, I feel like it's pretty clear the direction we're calling. So why would we ask them to prepare something for a full-time person and then we say, actually no? So, I don't know.
And council member Swam, too.
Yeah, is it possible that we clarify this with a motion? Does it have to be an agenda bill? Or could it be simply a motion to council that would correct the major?
Yeah, the agenda bill itself, I mean, it has a dropdown on it, it's just the agenda bill in and of itself.
Okay.
With suggestion.
Okay. Just like.
Okay.
Thank you.
And, yeah, and it would be basically, if, if it's a yay, then, then the administration can go one way, that's a nay, the administration has to go one or the other. Yeah. All right, council member Bullock.
Yeah, clarification, Mayor. I'm, I'm just, I was, in my mind, I'm thinking, we don't make an AB for anything, we're going to have it, have it as a discussion item on Tuesday's meeting, and then at that time we will decide which AB we're going to go with. So just have it as a discussion item on which way we want to go. So it gives us a week.
Okay.
To, to study up on it.
Right.
And I have, I personally like to talk to citizens and see where they like to go. I'll usually take the weekend to meet with people and, and see what the people think, it helps me to make decisions. So, anyway, I'm just saying, not to put an AB item on next week's agenda for either one, and then we have a discussion next week on Tuesday, the council meeting, and at that time we will decide which AB we'd want to do, we'll take a vote on it.
Okay.
That's, that's my suggestion.
Okay, and council member Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, I understand the point of view exactly, but we normally don't have this record discussions at council meeting, we have discussions here, making things forward to make our decisions. Once those decisions are brought forward, then you can tell, I don't agree with that, or I personally, several people that really should have a full-time attorney, so I would prefer it not be in discussion to something brought forward to, if we are hearing, like, for a full-time attorney, we're hearing consistently, you should have one, and then we can vote for it. They don't, if we say no, you talk to people, say, no, you shouldn't have one, then if we say no to full-time, they're going to default automatically to contract attorney, so that way we can get things for sharing, for ourselves, taken care of, and move forward, otherwise you put it off for another week, you know, right? So, and this should be done and resolved.
No, I do.
And we can have a full discussion about it, too, I agree with her, but it should be a come forward for us to make a yes or no vote.
Well, one thing we definitely need is, need, time is of the essence for, for our budget, and I believe Ms. Ryerson would probably agree with me, and she has her hand up.
Yeah, I think I can make this pretty easy, after hearing your guys' thoughts and comments. The agenda bill can just be the budget FTE chart, because I am not authorized to allow anybody in the city to hire someone without a budgeted position, and we're doing this outside of the budgeted position. So what we'll present to you is a budget chart, the FTE chart, with the included in-house city attorney position, and you get to choose if you say yes or no. If you say no to an in-house city attorney, that means we have to go out for a contract, and then that contract process would start, and all of that would come back to you for approval, et cetera. But that would be your agenda bill.
Because we have a consensus from the council that Ms. Ryerson's way of doing is probably the most.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree.
Okay, Jordy. Well, then that's how we're going to go. Thank you, council member. Sorry, Ms. Ryerson. Okay, so let's move on to our very simple item, the business and occupation tax. Okay, Ms. Ryerson, floor is yours.
All right, so I have two items, and we can discuss them concurrently. One resolution, which is the funding mechanism that many of the council members were concerned about, how much would go to the general fund, how much would go dedicated to park improvements or park bond payments. So there's that resolution before you, and per the mayor, we've set that at 50/50. So 50% of B and O tax revenue would go towards general fund to include parks, maintenance and operations, 50% would be dedicated solely to park improvements, capital improvements, and bond-related payments. So that's that portion. The second portion that we're going to be discussing is the B and O tax, the model ordinance and the administrative procedures. All of those are in your packet, and we followed the model ordinance pretty closely. Sent this off to both Dina as well as Kathleen to review, and I've incorporated Kathleen's comments on the ordinance portion, and Dina didn't really have too many comments on the, the code, so I'll take questions.
Oh, go ahead, council. Anybody have a question? Okay, council member Bullock.
Yeah, I want to try to understand it. A big B and O tax, if we did have a B and O tax, so the 50/50, at first I was like, I'm not quite sure to be 50/50 with where we're at, I think more like an 80/20, so that we, we address this park issue, you know, and we, we get on it, I'd be, you know, the 50/50 part, I think we dragged the park issue out for too long, people's memories would fade, and we might lose focus on why we added an extra burden to the community. So, I think, you know, I'm more of a fan of 20/80, if this is not going to, we want to go forward.
Okay, council member Evan.
I asked that same question to Ryan, and looking at the email you sent out, I believe it was 20% is what you were hoping for, for maintenance and operations side of things of that, and I, that falls in line with your, your 80/20. I wouldn't support anything that went, anything towards the general budget that wasn't earmarked specifically for maintenance and operation and the remainder for parks improvement only.
Okay, any further, council member Watson.
That's my thoughts exactly, as you were saying, I agree, we should take care of the parks as we can, but also take care of maintenance, while we can, because it's so shorthanded, so I agree about 80/20.
Okay, does any other council member have any questions or, or comment? Uh, council member Bullock.
Yeah, I was, I was reading through all the documents and everything. We have the cap at $1 million, I thought it was going to be a little bit more than that, because I know there's a lot of small businesses that are going to gross $1 million, but you have to realize, they have excess tax, they have state taxes, they have city taxes, they have government taxes, they have employee taxes. So they're not making $1 million net, and a lot of people will, a lot of small businesses will net $1 million, but they're not profiting from that, they're, I don't, I don't, I feel like this is going to be a burden on small businesses, and if you're going to do something like this, I think the cap needs to be much higher, because I'm not comfortable, especially, we have small businesses here that are just struggling to make ends meet, and I, I just feel like we are putting a burden on them for, as we classified it, the public health, safety, and welfare of the people of Bonnie Lake, but I can't see how it helps public health, safety, and the welfare if we have people who lose their businesses over this. I, I, I just, I have prob, you know, I just feel like that this is going to be a higher cap.
Okay. Council member.
As Sherry presented in the last one, a million is the highest cap in the state, we can obviously go over that. For every $100,000 above 1 million, it's $200 in taxes, $16 a month, so that, that is what that breaks down to. I mean, it is, it is certainly a number, I don't, I don't know that, I would argue that it's life-changing, that if a company made 1.2 million, that, that $400, that $32 a month over that year is going to shutter their business, but I, I understand your, your point of view, but that's why we set the cap so high. Most cities have it at 50,000 or 100,000 worth, where they would be paying thousands of dollars. But even if they made $2 million that year, that's $2,000. So it, it, it is, as you start growing, that does become a more significant number, but like I said, the, the Applebee's does probably 3.5 million a year, and if you're using that as a cap, as it's always full, it's always busy, looking at these other square footages, you know, like, like Glow is probably 20%, 25% of the square footage of an Applebee's. So if, if you're looking at that same concept, they would likely be probably right on that cusp, either or 100,000, I, I don't know their sales, but, but I, I can't imagine many small businesses that we're trying to support being gratefully impacted by, by this, because of that million-dollar cap, you know? DJs and, and the subways and these places like this are not going to feel an impact from this. It's really meant, like I said, 80% comes from the top 11 businesses here in, in town, and that was just what 20 minutes worth of research, so it, it is money, I'm not denying that it's not money, it, but, but $200 for every 100,000 in additional sales beyond a million is what that breaks down to.
And council member Swam.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did anybody find out why the localized cities around the nearest don't have it generally?
Auburn just put it in place.
Auburn just got theirs like this year. What had you?
Yeah, and I believe Sherry talked with Auburn about why they brought theirs.
No, it was very smart, because they did an economic study, and identified it as a revenue source that they use, because of the growing city, right? But like Sumner, or, you know, even maybe, Lee and Ublock.
I, I don't recall off the top of my head who does or doesn't.
Because, because my contention is that it's extraordinarily a smart solution for what we're using it for, right? It is specifically targeted for parks. It makes just a tremendous amount of sense to do that. The problem is that I have with it is it's a completely wrong message, you know, and there's no matter how much, and how, I try to explain it to these folks that are smaller businesses, they just, they're going to strangle me over. They just absolutely want to like tackle me and just pummel me, and I'm like, you're not even going to pay, don't even have to pay. Hopefully. It's just, you know, because everybody drives a Ford 10, right? My favorite thing, and they, they see our bird out there, welcome to the city of Bonnie Lake, that's our slogan, right? Where dreams get sober. Deposit your wallet here is not part of that statement. We have to be the place where people want to go, and if we put up another barrier for them, albeit as like completely like wrong, it sends the message, because if you're going to move to the city of Bonnie Lake, and you want to start your business up here, you're thinking, you know, I'm going to place my business here, 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 I could go to Sumner, I could go to Bonnie Lake. Well, you know, Bonnie Lake, why do you go to Bonnie Lake? You know, they have that B and O tax up there, you wouldn't want to go up there. Probably not even going to pay it if you actually did the financials, right? But it's just the message of the whole thing. So I could see, it could be, again, very smart if we didn't kill the whole parks plan and had those folks come, you know, through and say, hey, you know, this is a parks plan, this is the funding we need, and here's the mechanisms that we can use for that, it could be a whole part of that package, right? You know, this, this is the vehicle we could use for that. I think councilman Evans identified that, you know, I don't know what that, you know, funding option looks like, because we almost get into that scenario where we did that ultra, ultra, ultra nightmare scenario that I still wake up in the middle of my sweating about, Parks District, where it was like, oh, well, you just want a bunch of money, and you're not even going to tell us where you're going to spend it for. So I'm there with you when it's a package deal. Today, I'm going to say like, no.
Okay. Well, council member Swam, I can say that I think all of us have wanted to pummel and strangle you with.
It's like a little thing, you know, it's like a little like, you're on.
Now, exactly. Council, council member Watson, I believe Ms. councilwoman wanted to make comments to one of our, one of that, so before we forget.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I just wanted to add to what Justice mentioned about, that need is over and above what we're currently budgeting, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear, that 20%, I'm sure it wouldn't fund everything. And two, that, that's, that's two maintenance, two additional maintenance workers projected to help us with the load of parks we have right now, and I consider it a ball field, but it does include some of the items that are lower than, I had to point the additional here, some of this infrastructure needs that may exist in Midtown when that does get obstructed. And there's some wild cards here, I mean, we've got a lot more trails that we haven't immediately passed the crap, to kind of feel our way through a little bit here, so, and it also, I did want to point out, I know Sherry said at one point, there are some needs in finance that may, I'm assuming, Sherry, I'm speaking for you, I apologize, I didn't factor that into my numbers, but I don't know what finance has needs or over and above my own needs, perhaps staffing on this, or whatever it may be. So I just wanted to make those, those points clear. This, the operations side of this is a longer-term issue that we still talk about. It's not going to be satisfied with two maintenance workers right now, especially when we're adding infrastructure.
How many, Mr. Johnson, how many maintenance workers have you had deployed right now?
One. Our parks are perfect.
And that's why we have the long hair on the, on the median and on the sides of.
That is true, I guess, yeah.
All right, thank you. Council member Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, this tax is going to help us get our parks going forward, and it's not going to hurt small businesses by having additional tax be spent out there. Don't forget, people, I sound, they spend all the time working, I mean, the kids go do something, and they go sell Sumner, or you go off somewhere else, why not come to go to Midtown Park that we have? And when the kids are there with mom and dad and family, or the weekday, mom comes out there, oh, I'm going to stop by the theater, oh, I'm going to stop by a hobby store, go shopping there, I'm going to go to a restaurant. I mean, they're bringing their families here to go play in our park, where if you don't have a basket or ten years, you can park out there on playgrounds, we talk about having ball fields, we're going to have, if we get a ball field, there will have sports teams out there, and guess what? They're going to go shopping in Midtown, too. So this tax might be a challenge for some small businesses right now, and as, as me being a small business, I'm not in this category, but I would see it be a concern for me, but in the future, especially if I'm a retail store in that area, behind Fred Meyer and stuff, where we might have a park, I would say, oh, yeah, that's going to help me improve my business, and get kids to my store, families to my store, so I don't see how it can be a win-win for everyone in the long run, even though as, as Santa Fe New March County's chocolate, but the dumpers aren't that huge as Mr. Evans brought to our attention. If we don't do something soon, we're not going to have it out there, and we're not going to have those families shopping in Bonnie Lake.
No, and, yeah, thank you, council member Swam, and council member Auburn.
Yeah, it was a, yeah, Midtown is, is just a dream of mine.
Yeah, it was a, yeah, Midtown is, is just a dream of mine as well. I think, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but I feel like in, in previous conversations, Senator Evans, you had mentioned that much of the funding that we are needing is actually in need of tourist projects that we have right now. Is that correct?
Uh, good, twenty-five, thirty million, like known projects, yeah.
Okay.
Those projects haven't been budgeted yet, but they are known on the books. What's unknown is the remainder of the stuff that's in our comprehensive plan as things we need to do, which includes Midtown. Midtown is not part of what is the known budget. I mean, I think we still have eight or nine million in trails for finishing Fennel Creek, somewhere, somewhere in that, on, on projected projects. You know, then, then finishing up some of the stuff at Allen York Park and moving over to hopefully Midtown with some other options that we're discussing. But yeah, that, yeah. One other, one other aspect to that, but.
Part where it's going to make groceries more expensive?
Yeah. Do we have any further discussion?
Yes, Councilmember, I'm sorry. Sherry, I, I know, I think, I think your resolution here is, is what my question is about. But in the, uh, uh, last workshop, we discussed this. I wanted to have some sort of trigger legislation that should the, the B and O pass that it is specific to that. That's the Resolution thirty fifty-nine as, as written, okay.
Which I'm hearing most people would like change to eighty, twenty. So twenty percent to the general fund to support. I'm looking for my, there's too many pieces of paper. So twenty percent instead of fifty percent for the general fund to include parks and maintenance operations. And then eighty percent to parks improvements and park-related bonds is what you'd like that to say, correct? That sounds like the consensus I'm hearing from the council.
Yes, you're correct. And that'll give us anywhere between a dollar bonding.
Okay, I believe, uh, Mr. Anderson does have her answer to that from the council. However, I did have one question for you, Mr. Anderson. I'll reading over the, um, the ordinance and the, and the resolution. I didn't see any mention within that of any sort of nonprofit business. And I do know that we've had a couple of nonprofit agencies who have approached us to ask about what their status would be according to that. Was it deliberately left out or did I, did I just miss it in my reading?
Nope, I followed the model ordinance in other cities. Some cities do allow for a higher threshold for nonprofits or exclude them. The model ordinance did not, and I, I pretty much followed the model ordinance and what other cities had done. So that is a council option. And then I also need to know how you would like to proceed from here.
Okay, that, yeah, uh, Councilmember Evans.
Uh, with that, I, I wouldn't be opposed to excluding all nonprofits from, from this. I don't know that there are many that would reach that million-dollar threshold in, in general sales in the first place. I don't know how well your Lions Club for kid sales go, but.
Yeah.
So the one that we've been in discussions with is MultiCare.
Oh, okay.
And Indigo, MultiCare, um, they are nonprofits.
Pretty taxes today, by the way, FYI. So you're seriously considering excluding a nonprofit.
What is the nonprofit that they provide?
Medical care? Like they're multi.
Do they have shareholders?
They were in service non-care.
What's that? Yeah, multi-care, do they have shareholders? I, I believe so, that's why I'm asking.
I'm not for sure, they're corporates.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I wouldn't exclude that. When I think nonprofit, I think.
Yeah.
I think Lions Club for Kids, I think, you know, Juanas and, you know, these other, other groups.
Well, I don't know, then can you do like nonprofits up to, you know, two million dollars? Yeah, right.
Yeah. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to that.
Up to three million, you say?
Two.
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 Two. Nonprofits don't have to pay property tax, so that particular.
Yeah, I think they don't.
Oh, okay.
Okay, um, Mr. Anderson, did we, did we cover the item E, AB twenty-two ninety-three, uh, the B and O tax discussion, or is that a different panel?
We have covered them both, but I need direction on how the council would like to proceed from here. Would you like to see this as agenda bills on your next council meeting for a vote? It's not required to have a public hearing. Would you like a public hearing?
Or public hearing is better than anything, so we're not, we're not time constrained by this, so.
The, the time constraint, so I'm told by the vendors that I would need to use for software for this and for the online portal, some of you have been in these discussions with me, it's going to cost me about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars to get this up and running. And they have about an eight-month window of what they're behind right now. So it's going to take me at least eight months to get this up and running once it's implemented. So if you pass it tonight, which I'm not asking you to do, I, I can't be operational for about eight months. So what Auburn has done, they've, they've kind of came up with the same issue, is their tax is due January, tax started this year, January one, twenty twenty-two. However, they've told all of their businesses, hey, don't pay us quite yet because we're not ready to accept payments. So that might be the situation we're in as well, the longer we delay. So just know that that's out there and we might be saying, hold up, don't send us money yet. It's likely that we won't be collecting a lot of this money until mid to late twenty twenty-three, based upon the circumstances and how late we're getting into this.
And given that understanding, does the council want to put this on our next council meeting to be voted on?
With, with the, the public hearing.
Yeah, with a public hearing, yes.
I agree.
Okay.
You can't do the same.
We can't?
No, I have.
Oh, okay. Uh, when, when, Madam Burke, when is the next time we can actually get it on?
Um, well, do not, I'm thinking of the second, or it would be the next. Next one after that.
Yeah. And, yeah, and that would be a workshop of an action plan.
That would be.
Okay.
It's a workshop, but on the second.
Okay.
Do we have enough time to advertise for the hearing for next Tuesday?
Yeah.
No?
Because the paper doesn't come out till Wednesday.
Oh, okay.
Is, is there a separate reporting thing? I missed something on that portal thing or something. Because I'm used to, as a business, just, you know, filling out the, the website, the state website, you have forty-seven different things.
Most of these businesses would be.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm getting a lot of feedback. The state doesn't, um, process the DOR, uh, the B and O tax payments. So every city I've spoken with recommends one particular program because they do it right. And so you're kind of locked into this one way unless we're going to start accepting all these payments in-house, which would cause us more work than I think what you want to pay for.
Yes, yeah. Okay. I don't see, we could have the public discussion next week and then for council meetings, just weeks behind, like I really heard.
Yeah, I mean, we're collecting money in Janu, or July or August, but.
Just triggering this council meeting after that, we could have. So that would be the next possible council meeting that we can have it after a proper act.
That would be the, um, night of August.
Okay.
For public comment.
Okay, item.
Two weeks later on the agenda for vote.
Okay. Item F would be, um, um, our, uh, Mr. Sullivan, are you awake? I saw you.
Yeah.
Okay, this is.
There's one more thing.
There is, it's, uh, I'm amending the land use ma, uh, major amendment for self-storage facilities. And Mr. Sullivan, the floor is yours.
All right, so we were asked to bring this to a workshop, I'm going to be quick, given the time. Over the last year, we saw the number of proposals that we had for self-storage facilities go from about, currently about two hundred and fifty thousand per feet of self-storage facility in the city. We had applications pending for, uh, four hundred thousand per feet of self-storage. In looking at the analysis from an economic standpoint, uh, self-storage facilities draw, generate about point, about a nickel per square foot of revenue that comes to the city. Not talking about private property owners, just kind of through taxes, property taxes. First, right now, we're getting sales tax and, uh, the tax on the building, not the land is having to be standard regardless. So, uh, in doing that, we talked with the planning commission and CDC early in the year, um, and we received direction to bring an amendment forward that would remove self-storage facilities as, as a permitted use in both the East Town and C two zoning districts. We did conduct a public hearing, um, the planning commission, the planning commission unanimously recommended that the council adopt the ordinance, uh, removing, uh, the mini-storage facilities as a permitted use. In conversation with both the planning commission and CDC, uh, there was a current term to want to balance, kind of existing uses with future growth. So there is also a part of that ordinance would say that if you have a vested permit for a operational facility as of the date of the ordinance, you would be able to continue on in the future to include if you want to tear it down and rebuild anyway. That's a little bit more than the standard non-conforming uses, but it's actually kind of another layer of protection. So, um, they short out, which is here in Newtown, wants to tear it down and rebuild their small complex into a three-story building, they would still be able to do that because they were using their property as many storage facilities as of the date of the ordinance. The other request that we had from the CDC was to send a letter to every property owner who would be affected by the ordinance, which we did, none over a hundred and fifty letters to every property owner. So far, I don't know with who's online, if any of them are here to watch this meeting or in the, in the, in this, in the audience, but we did receive three emails. One was from the gentleman who owns the block and store right around Myers in Ford Ten, wanted a copy of the ordinance, wanted to know how the grandfathering clause worked. And that's why I explained it to him, basically, those property owners who have mini-storage facilities today can continue in perpetuity to run those mini-storage facilities, they can improve those, if they want to, completely remove every building on there and build a brand-new storage facility, they can. Which is, as I said, more than what a normal non-conforming uses check provides for. So that was one comment, but he never responded back with any sort of objections. It was just questioning. The second was from the owners of the mobile home park, uh, Playa Meadows, just asking, they have people that park RVs there that live there. This isn't affected by the solar events. It's fine, explain that to them. And then another ordinance from the general public is basically supporting removing it as a, a. So out of a hundred and eighty-five mailings, probably, and no one appeared, no one appeared at the public hearing with the planning commission. Those notices didn't go to each individual property owner, which is probably the second notice as a request. So, um, we're still waiting for if there's any more guidance or direction on this.
Hey, Councilmember Auburn.
Um, there was one section that was a bit of a red flag, and so I had a question for you in regards to that. It is in, uh, section three, um, one eight dot five four dot zero six zero, the discontinuation of non-conforming building if damaged or destroyed. Can you elaborate a little bit more on what that, what that entails?
That's what I was explaining, yes, the standard non-conforming use provision. And almost every one of those will go in the state of Washington.
Yeah.
If a non-conforming use is destroyed, damaged, removed, then when you rebuild, you have to rebuild with a new property. However, if you go down to the new language, which is in paragraph three, uh, what we say there is not.
On C?
Yeah, C. Notwithstanding the subsection A, there's a special provision now for self-storage facility. So basically, A does not apply to self-storage.
Okay, I think, um, where the red flag was coming up for me in this, and, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, but in a hypothetical situation, I want to make sure that, um, you understand that I am not in favor of storage facilities being all over the place, but I am in favor of property rights, as you know. So, um, I think where, um, so let's say they have a storage facility, it burns to the ground, God forbid, something horrible happens, and they, are they not able to rebuild that?
Under this ordinance, they would be able to. That's, that's what the sub C provides.
Okay, yeah.
That, that, that was the, as I was saying, additional layer of protection that we provided in order to, as the, the utility ordinance isn't to stop the, these uses that have been there in the past, not to stop the physical vested.
Just not.
But just to limit the explosive growth of them.
Yeah.
Because we're limited on spacing.
Okay.
So it's trying to strike a balance between property rights, what people are currently doing, and economic development. So it's trying to strike, yeah.
Okay.
Provision C addresses that red flag.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Evans.
Yeah. So, Auburn, when did, when did you send those letters, can I ask?
It was early May, late June, early July. We wanted, we wanted to do it, we wanted to do it closer to the meeting night so that people know, I got that letter back in April, we'll get to that for. But then there's the other, we said to us, we tried to, we tried to balance it, I think it was right before the fourth of July, we tried to get it out.
What was the response percentage?
Three.
Three?
So is it, wait, since we do have people here responding to this, would it be appropriate to let them say something or if that's.
The council can vote on it to.
Or, or if, before the, before this goes to vote next week, I can leave it in, quickly after the meeting, answering the questions and see if they have concerns and report back to that, that's it, that would be the other way to it.
Can we leave that up to them?
Yeah, I would prefer. Doing any big motion?
Well, let's, uh, if it's okay, we can ask to see whether, are, would y'all be satisfied with, um, our planning and building supervisor talking with you after the meeting, or do you wish to?
Yeah, after the meeting or tomorrow, if you find.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
Wanted to be informed, that's why I was right here, had to support the decision.
I appreciate that, and thank you for staying for this wonderful. Yes, Councilmember Evans.
Hey, Jason. If for some reason now, uh, storage aside, just out of my own curiosity, if there was a, and I'm not even saying this because of where it's at, but just if the mini-storage place right here off of Myers was a, an aquarium, and we got rid of aquariums as a permitted use and that burned down, the exclusion C in that would not trigger, they would have to build something that would then be a permitted use.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So the only exclusion to that non-conforming tear down is specifically that, okay.
And I wouldn't want to muddle those two issues because that's a much larger conversation.
Yeah.
Keep it focused on, yes, in, in practice, you know.
Okay.
Okay, Councilmember Paulson.
That just brought up another question for me. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. So, uh, this is specifically for self-storage. It's not an aquarium.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so like, if the self-storage burns down, God forbid, please don't happen, um, they get to rebuild because their grandfather did.
I don't know where the ordinance is working.
Correct. The new way, the ordinance is ready, okay.
Okay, any, any further discussion?
Oh, Councilmember Evans. Thank you. I, I think this is a tough problem because the city needs a revenue stream, that economic engine for the city is a long course. So, and when we don't realize that revenue, it isn't a real income, right? You know, we want to make sure police show up and things happen, all that good stuff. So we, at CDC, this came up, CDC asked, and Jason sent the letters out, right? Which I, I guess I want to thank them, and then I want to ask council, is there anything else we can do to be more responsible to let people know that their property rights are, are changing, right? We are changing people's property rights. That is probably the, next to incarcerating somebody, that's probably the worst thing we can do, right? So it's a big deal. Don't want to move fast. In my, my mind, I don't want to move fast, I want to give everybody the opportunity to understand what's going on. I think the city's done a good job here, right?
I think the city's done a good job here, right? If you follow the processes, and we've gone the extra mile to send a hundred-something letters.
No, and my comment for that is that I believe that our city has been an excellent general, so I admire their work ethic. And on that positive note, do we have any more commentary on it?
So we want this on next week's agenda.
Oh, I thought it was already on this, next week's agenda.
We need a half.
Yes. Yes. No, no, I need to go.
Yeah, it needs to be on full council.
Mr. Carr is not here tonight, so.
Okay, all right, we are adjourned.